Alright, I hope everybody has had a good afternoon and leading into evening. If not, then I hope that this will be the turning point of said day. That what we do today will help us to put aside what may have not been too wonderful in today, in whatever took place today. And if things went well, then hopefully this will be the icing on the cake of a wonderful evening. Let me share my screen, which I always forget to do. And we have a, not going to say we have a lot to cover, because every time I say that, I end up covering less than I thought I would have covered. We are currently at slide number 139. That is what I presumed would have been a few slides more than the last slide in our study. And we have a whole lot of study left to go, but I am excited. I enjoy what this study has been doing for me personally. And I hope that it is having a similar effect on those who are participating in the study. I look forward to the direction things are going. I appreciate the participation and I pray that that will continue. So a quick recap and then we will get into what we are doing today. So you guys must be tired to hear the name of the study. But the study is a last case study. At the end of this study, if it's one thing I know, everybody going to know is the name of the study and the approach that we're taking. The last case, oh, and the verse that it's from, the last case study. Anybody can tell me which verse we're using as our basis?
Luke 15.
Luke chapter 15, now we're taking a three-pronged approach. Anybody can tell me what the three prongs are?
Diagnosis, give others a chance, but prescription in there too.
Alright, I guess people don't warm up yet. Alright, so diagnosis of brothers, we said. Which is looking at the problems of the characters that are, are in the study. Correlation, aligning how those problems may affect us. And then prescription, finding a solution or a treatment to said problems. So gone through two problems with the sheep already, or potential problems. Looked at scatterbrain syndrome and we have been looking at bug for the past few weeks. We have been looking at some prescription methods. We looked at the pill of present tense and we looked at the pill of past providence. And these two pills alongside the one we're currently looking at, pill of post promises, are supposed to help us to deal with worry and doubt. Worry and doubt and the hesitation and course correction that occurs when we allow worry and doubt to dictate our actions. So the pill of present tense was supposed to help us to look at the things that we have right now that should provide us with gratitude. And also address things that we can address now. Focus on the actions that we can take to deal with the matter at hand and leave the ones that we cannot do right now. Don't allow that to provide on that. The next pill that we looked at, the pill of past providence, was to look at the things that God has done for us in the past, the things that he has brought us through, and use that as motivation and encouragement to remind us that he can bring us through what we're going through at the moment or maybe going through soon. So the pill of present tense is to look at now, pill of past providence is to look at the past and God's providence. And we've been looking at the pill of post promises. We looked at two passages, Hebrews chapter 10, verse 23. And when we look at that passage, the intention in that passage was to highlight that God is faithful and trustworthy in the promises that he makes. So when God makes a promise, he will keep said promises. And that was the first pillar that we were using to ground the pill of post promises. The confidence that once God makes a promise, he will carry it through. And then we look at Romans, these Romans chapters. Let me check, Romans chapter 4, 20 and 21, that wasn't wrong there. And what we're looking at there is that not only does God keep his promises, God is capable of carrying out his promises. So God is willing to keep his promises and he is capable of carrying out his promises. And that, that transforms how we look at the promises of God. Because now we know that the things that he says he will do, he will do them and he is capable of carrying them out. Then we started to look at some passages that highlighted some, some promises of God. And we found that in these promises, the benefits are wonderful, but God requires us to meet him somewhere or to do something. So we looked at two, well, we looked at one and we were in the middle of another. But if we look at Proverbs chapter 3, that's the first one we looked at. And we saw the conditions that were outlined by God for us to benefit from what he has to say. And they were trust in the Lord with all your heart and lead not on your own understanding in all your ways that knowledge him. So there were three conditions and providing we meet these conditions, providing we strive towards these conditions. Then we saw not only was it a promise of God, but it was almost a natural progression from the condition that our path would be directed by God. And a lot of the conditions that we'll see biblically speaking, they're not only done through God's intervention, but they're also set in such a way that when we do the things that God tells us to do, that brings benefits in and of itself. The outside of the benefit that comes from God giving us something, the conditions themselves have benefits for us. So it's a dual blessing for us as Christians, but we have to carry out the conditions first. So that was the first passage we looked at. And then we started looking at Luke chapter 6, verse 30. This is a very interesting passage. So let me just remind us as to what we looked at. So we, the passage reads, "Give and it will be given to you. Good measure, pressed down, shaken together and running over, will be put into your bosom. For with the same measure that you use, it will be measured back to you." And we, we identified some of the conditions. The first one being that God requires us to give. And the second condition being that the measure with which we give will determine the measure with which we get. So we give and we shall, and it shall be given to us. And the measure with which we give will determine the measure with which we get. We looked at some of the descriptions, re, how it will be given back to us, whatever is given back to us. We looked at good measure, good here, not meaning the amount that is given, but rather the quality. So we saw good here to mean quality, not quantity. So the measure being the portion that is given or the determined extent will be of high quality. Pressed down, meaning to be packed, to make a compact bundle. We looked at shaken together, being shaken with intent of filling the container with its contents. And then running over mean to pour out beyond the measure. So all of this packing down, all of this compressing, still ends in what is given being more than can be contained. Because that is the intention in the giving back. And then we looked at bosom and we, we highlighted that a particular area of garment that is labeled as the bosom, being the part of the garment that is used to keep and carry things. And we tried to highlight the idea of that having something that you, you carrying around the whole thing, having it spill out, being unable to contain it. And that's the idea that is being brought forward by what is given back to us. So that is where we ended on Sunday. And we're going to now jump in to the flip side of this, of this verse. So we already established that if you give, it will be given to you. And we establish how it will be given to you. The passage starts with four and we already know four here is a conjunction. And what the conjunction four establishes is that there is a connection between what was said and what follows. Says with four, with the same measure that you use, it will be measured back to you. Measure here comes from the word metron, it means a measure. And a measure here means the rule of standard or judgment. So when I used to read this passage, I was, I was slightly confused. Because I, I thought when it says the same measure that you use, it will be measured back to you. I thought of it like a ruler. So if I give, if I measure out six and that is what I, I give, then that means that I am going to get six back. So that, that kind of contradicted the whole good measure, press down, shaken together, running over. But in my head, I was like, boy, if I don't give a good measure, if I don't press down, if I don't shake together and if I don't have it running over, if that's not what I give and the measure that is used to give back to me is the same measure that I give with, then clearly that is, that's something wrong there. If I give this amount, then I'm gonna get back the same amount. But that is not the idea that is being, that is being brought out here. The rule or standard of judgment speaks to what you use to decide what you're giving. But the concept, it cannot be used to align man with God. So same, the same way God says that my, a year to, to you is like a second to me. And a day to you is like a thousand years. To me, that is the idea that God wants to establish in this measure. So if you give little, you will get back little from God. If you give much, you will get back much from God. So the measure, that measure there, how much you give or the way that it is given will be the same with God. But the amount will differ because the amount differs between you and God. What is, what we deem to be a holy for us is little to God. So when God is giving much, imagine how much that is viewed as for us. And that is, that is why the good measure, pressed down, shaken together, running over is, is there. To highlight that when you give your regular giving with good measure, this is God's good measure. God's good measure is pressed down, shaken to get, shaken together and running over. But similarly, if you give a small measure, then do not expect the, the reciprocate, do not expect other than the reciprocated measure. If you give with small, if small measure is what you use to give, if your rule of standard or judgment in what you give is small, then expect God to use the same in his giving back to you. The word you, so it says for the same measure that you use. And use here is a similar term to measure. So it is a verb form of the word metron. And said to measure out or to meet out, to give out by measure or to dole out. So for the measure that you measure out, that you give out, that you dole out, it will be measured back to you. And measure here to meet in return, to measure in return to repair. So now we, one of the things that David had, had brought up a few Bible classes ago, is the idea of, is it that we question or we doubt God's ability to deliver on these promises? Or is it that we are not carrying out what is required to meet these, meet these standards? And this is one of the questions that we need to ask now. If we look at what we get from God, and this doesn't have to just be, it's in a financial measure. If we look at the things that we get from God, blessings, provisions likewise. And we say, okay, I am, I don't believe I'm getting a lot from God. Can we look at what we give and say that it is contradictory to this verse or the measure with which we give? Can we genuinely say that, hey, I have been giving and I am not seeing it being pressed down, shaken, shaken together and running over? If we stand in that position where we can genuinely state that, then we, we need to get answers from God. But I can only speak of myself. And what I can say is what I have been getting proves that we are very fortunate that God's measure is not our measure. Because if I was getting what I was giving, then I would be very destitute. But if we genuinely want to access this kind of returns, these kinds of returns, then we'll have to give with a great measure. I, I never had any financial assets when, when cash minus was going on. But I have heard a lot of stories of individuals who have been on the unfortunate end re, that, re that particular scheme. And one of the reasons why in, a lot of individuals were hurt was because the measure with which they gave was great. If they gave a small measure, then what they would receive would be small in comparison. Likewise, if it were lost, it would be small. However, because they wanted the returns to be great, what did they do? They gave, they gave with great measure. And for the unfortunate ones who weren't able to, to receive, even get it back before things went crashing down, they lost with great measure. I encourage us to take that kind of approach with God. Having accepted that God keeps his promises, having accepted that God is capable of carrying out his promises. And to be honest, even if you don't wholeheartedly accept it, now is the time to prove it. Now is the time to put God to the test. Since God claims that this is what he will do, providing we do the part that is requested. Let us, let us increase our measure, let us increase the measure with which we give. And have God prove his promises to us. That is my, that is my, um, my task. I am going to now put God to the test to re-encourage, to, to encourage me to, to believe in his promises. And I think that this, this one, you, you may call it a selfishly decided one, but I feel like this one, this one is a good one to start. Especially in this particular time where me increasing the measure with which I give can have a more pronounced effect. And I encourage you, it doesn't necessarily have to be this particular passage. But if you find that you see verses like this and as much as there's a part of you that's, yeah, man, I know that's how it goes. There's another part of you that said, boy, this is figurative, this is not a literal passage. But you cannot find in the passage that it is figurative. So there's no, nothing in the language that indicates that it is figurative. But because you, you don't want to take it literal, you hold it off that it is figurative. I challenge you now to challenge God to do what he tells you to do. To get to the place that he says you need to be to access the benefits. And then see if the benefits won't come. That's, that's the best, that's the best encouragement that I can give in that regard. That is, that is what I, I am trying to use to drape myself up. I realize that I fall short in, in doing the things that God tells me to do. And a lot of the times I expect the benefit that I'm supposed to come with the actions that I'm not carrying. But this is, this is my time and I encourage you, your time to, to draw up our shoes laces and to, to move to the position where God can actually do the things that he promises us. And as I said earlier, there are benefits that come from just carrying out the action before we even get the blessings from God. So we are robbing ourselves twofold when we don't do the things that God commands us to do or encourages us to do. Both in the promise that he makes and in the internal blessings that he places in the actions themselves. Any questions or queries or comments before I move to the next verse, I mean the next book? Alright, I presume that to mean that we're understanding. If anybody not understanding, feel free to raise your hand at any point. Or post a question in the chat so that we can, we can clarify things. Alright, so moving on, going to need a read-off, double points for this because this is my favorite chap, um, verse of the Bible. So you get, you get even bonus points. Go ahead.
Okay, 1 Corinthians 10, verse 30. No temptation has overtaken, sorry, yeah, expect, except such as is common to man. But God is faithful, who will not allow you to be tempted beyond what you are able. But with the temptation will also make the way of escape, that you may be able to bear it.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Sister Paula. Well read as per usual. And yes, your points have been noted. Alright, so this is my favorite, my favorite Bible passage, 1 Corinthians 10, verse 13. And for somebody such as myself that keeps making mistakes and keeps falling short, this is particularly encouraging. That what I am trying to achieve is, is not an impossible task. There, there's encouragement all over this passage. And I think one of the reasons why this passage is my favorite passage, because this is one of those, the few promises that God makes that doesn't have a condition. So whilst the benefits of this promise require you to act after the fact, the promises in this passage are, are without condition. God has given this, God has set this to be so. And now you are the one who has to determine whether you're going to take advantage of what has been given or what has already been established. And maybe that's why it's a little more encouraging that even though I am not where I'm supposed to be or not what I am doing, what I'm supposed to be doing, this still applies to me. So let's look at the passage and see exactly what God is promising here. And if this is something that we accept, and also if it is something that we accept, how are we using it? How is it benefiting us as individuals? So going to break it up. No temptation has overtaken you except such as is common to man. So temptation here means a putting to proof, a putting to proof. Yes, I, if, if that makes sense to you, then you're a far greater scholar than I. It never make any sense to me when I say it. So I, I looked further and it was breaking, it was broken up essentially into an enticement to sin, an enticement to sin. So it says, no, essentially it means no enticement to sin has overtaken you except such as is common to man. And this enticement to sin can be broken down into two categories. So there are from outward circumstances, which are things happening around you that affect you and then now provide some, something that would cause it to sin. So an example of this could be taxi man them upon the road. Taxi man them upon the road, a drive in their usual ways and they lead to you using language that you know that you shouldn't be using, using your vehicle in a manner that you shouldn't be using it, et cetera. So that is an example of an outward circumstance. Another outward circumstance could be the loss of a loved one, leading you to, to move away from God because you have now lost trust in him. How could you do this to me, God? How could you have this happen? How could you say that I am your child and you put me through something like that? So that is an outward circumstance that could provide an enticement to sin. And then inward desires, and this one we're particularly familiar with. Inward desire, the things that we want, the desires of the flesh that run contrary to the things that God wants us to do. So when we give into those desires, then that is sin. And when we give into the, or we, we react to the outward circumstances that is sin. And an enticement to sin can come from both of these places. Outward, trying to get in or inward, trying to get out. It can also mean, so that's one definition. So one definition is an enticement to sin. It can, temptation here can also mean adversity, affliction or trouble. This passage, based on the usage, as you see onward, you recognize that it can mean both. It can mean enticements to sin and it can mean adversity, affliction or trouble. And likewise, adversity, affliction or trouble can eventually become an enticement to sin. So they're not necessarily mutually exclusive, they overlap in some circumstances. But the most important thing to, to, to take home is that in both these scenarios, none of them have overtaken you except such as is common to man. And the word overtaken here means to take, to take. And it, it means, the taking means to get a hold of, to take in order to carry away. So that's the idea behind it. Taking something, grasping it and then carrying it away with you. That's the idea of the overtaken. So the, the passage is saying that no enticement to sin has taken a hold of you with intent to take you away, except such as is common to man. And that last part is particularly comforting. So we're going to look at exactly what those words mean now. So except is a conjunction, conjunction links words or groups of words. And it is used before a statement that forms an exception to the one just made. So the, the first statement is no temptation has overtaken you. Except here is establishing an exception. So now you are going to find out which temptation has overtaken you or which temptations can overtake you. And it goes on to say such as is common to man. So these now are the temptations that can overtake you, that have overtaken you. And common to man comes on the word that means human. And it speaks to something being common to man, being that, that it applied to the things belonging to men. So these are the things that belong to men, these are the things that are common to man. These affect humans essentially. So if it is not common to man, if this isn't something that affects human beings in a sense that it is now viewed as a commonality, this is something shared, this is something that we all can say, hey, yeah, I understand this, I understand that, this is not a specific or unique scenario. I'm not the only one going through this. That is essentially what common to man means. And God is telling us here that the only temptation And God is telling us here that the only temptations that will overtake you, the only temptations that you will have to struggle with, the only enticements to sin that will occur, are the ones that occur to man on a whole. These aren't, you're not going to be going through anything that only you have to go through. There is somebody else, there are a group of other people, that are struggling or are being tempted in the same way that you are. Don't feel that you're going to go through something that nobody else can understand, that nobody else has overcome, that nobody else is struggling with at the moment. And that is particularly significant when we look at our, the importance of us, of us being a, a, a family. Knowing that the things that happen to one of us can also happen to another member, in the body should encourage us to be more willing to share. Should encourage us to be more willing to look out for others. Because if you know that you went through something and it was difficult, and you wished that there was somebody there to guide you, you wish there was somebody there to give you a shoulder, you wished that there was somebody there who could give you some advice, and you, you went through that. If you know that there's a possibility that there is somebody else in the church that may be going through that same thing alone, shouldn't you try your best to make yourself available? And yes, I know that it's not the easiest of processes, and you don't want to throw your business out there lest people judge, unless people murmur, et cetera, et cetera. But what is more important is providing the assistance, to those who may be struggling, who may not be as well equipped as you were to go through the situation, who probably never had the same support cast that you did when you were going through your temptation. And I know begging for some external assistance, for somebody who knows, what they are going through, or better yet, is afraid to share, is afraid to say that they're going through this, for the same reasons that you didn't. But you have already gone through and you have already come out on the other side and you have, it may have been ugly, but you were victorious. Are you allowing fear of people looking at you and saying, boy, you did go through that? Is that fear, diminishing the kind of encouragement that you can provide to somebody else? We quote a lot of scriptures like, like Saul saying that he's the chief of sinner, and that the things that he didn't want to do were the things that he did do. And we use that as encouragement to ourselves to say, hey, man, not that bad, if Paul did that go through, then, then I, I can understand. But are we robbing people from using us as those same kinds of examples? Shouldn't somebody be able to say, hey, boy, I'm struggling with lying, but you know, Stephen, he's struggling with the same line. And he's still trying to be faithful, I need to try to be faithful. Am I robbing somebody from saying, come into me and say, Stephen, my teeth again, my teeth again, and boy, how, how you manage to stop stealing? The Bible tells us that these things are common. We're doing it, we share, we share these tempt, these enticements. Not saying it, not talking about it, not sharing it doesn't take away from the fact that it is there. We are struggling with these things, and a lot of us are failing, in overcoming these things because we're struggling by ourselves. Because we allow the devil to tell us that you can do it on your own. We allow the devil to tell us that our fear of judgment, that, the negative things that people can say about us is more damaging to our spiritual life than, getting the help that we need, and that is a bold faced lie. The devil is using that to keep us in a battle with him by ourselves, and him knowing can't lose. We have to be very careful. David preached, and David said that an important part, of giving ourselves a gift of purity is partnership. We need help, it's not accident that we keep falling to the same sin. If we want to actually fight, if we want to actually overcome, we need to accept, that the people seeing that we are ugly doesn't make us more ugly. And no one knowing that we are ugly on the inside doesn't make us any less ugly. It is still there, the sin that we're struggling with, the stain that it provides, within us is still there even if no one knows. Better to be exposed and have the opportunity to be cleansed, than to keep it within and have it kill us. A lot of people don't like going to the doctor when things occur because they're afraid that when they go to the doctor, the doctor will say, boy, you know, say a cancer or something of the sort. But the, the ignorance is not bliss. Go and find out and, and maybe there's something that can be done. You sit down with it and it festers and it festers, and then when, when you have no choice but to address it, it is bigger than you. A lot of the besetting things that we struggle with, I know for myself, if I had probably looked for assistance, when it did just start, when it was a baby sin, for want of a better word, we know all sins are bad, but when it was manageable. If I did go to somebody and say, boy, David, you know, say me have a lust problem, ma, ma, ma see the ladies and boy, the thoughts start going. Maybe it would have been easier to address there, but then when it becomes, when it becomes a pornography problem, when it becomes a fornication problem, when it becomes an adultery problem, it is much harder to deal with that. But what, I never want to tell anybody, say me a lust. I never want nobody know, say when the girl them come at church in a tight dress, ma make sure ma sit down at the back. You know, people know these things. But what is the devil telling me? Keep it a secret because them will laugh, them will say you're wicked. But he's plotting, he's trying to get the lust to turn to something else, to add a new sin, to add a new struggle, to add a new complication that makes it even harder to tell people. That makes it even harder to get the assistance that you need. And the saddest part about this is that there is somebody in the building struggling with the same thing. Somebody who would love to be able to say, Stephen, I understand what you go through. Stephen is a, boy, help me. But the two are we sit down in silence. And if we keep, if we keep this up, we're going to, every day we'll have more things, that we struggle with. If, if, it's easier said than done, I will always say that. But as David said, we need to start making deliberate efforts, we need to stop this. It's easier said than done mentality, we need to stop this, let me fix it in my mind mentality. We need to, we need to get game plans where we say, you know what, I'm running out here. Forget the judgment, forget, forget the talking behind my back, forget the gossip. And I'm going to get the help this time. I'm going to, I'm going to go to the person who I think can help me this time, that's, that's what we need, that's where we need to go. And we need to stop waiting until we feel like we're capable, but that's another thing that I know I struggle with. So you say, I want to be able to do that, so let me, so let me study the scriptures and let me reach a, a spiritual state where you know now, now I'm comfortable, now, now I, I can, I can go share it with somebody. It don't work so, it don't work so, the, the fear that we feel, the anxiety, is there because Satan knows that the minute you go to someone, is the minute you are now able to find the liberation that you need. But the, the longer you stay waiting for the, for the, the, the window of opportunity, is the, is the more difficult it becomes. The comfort here for all of us, is that there is nothing that we can share, that somebody hasn't gone through, that somebody isn't going through, that somebody doesn't know how to overcome. You, you, you can't, you can't blow nobody mind, you can't bowl over, nobody know, you know, we hear gasps. And people are like, what, something goes so? There is somebody who can empathize with us, and there's somebody who needs our empathy. We, we need to, we need to help, we need to share. Um, Engel, I see your hand, and I have been talking for way too long, so go ahead.
Um, Stephen, what do I say to somebody? If I am, I, I, I'm struggling with pornography. I know it's just that I need to just lock down my laptop or wherever the materials are coming from. It's like sometimes you already know what it is, but, um, but what do you say to that person? Or what do you say, or how, how do you reach out, how do you say, talk?
Ex- excellent question, Engel, excellent question. And that is now where my level of experience is, is lacking. But this is where now I think as firstly as a church, no firstly as an individual and secondly as a church, we need to find ways to, to, to deal with these situations. So the one thing I'm going to bring up, and this is the thing, piggybacking on what David had said, re-partnership. Two minds are better than one, for want of a better word. What I may not be able to figure out, you may be able to figure out. What you may not be able to figure out, I may be able to figure out. Sometimes the reason we are not overcoming the things that we are struggling with, is not just because we are unwilling to put out the effort, but maybe we don't have the tools to figure out what are the actual actions that can be put in place. So having someone that we can talk to in that regard can aid us. Another thing is going, choosing part, individuals to speak to that we think actually can help. So don't get the idea of partnership being just you and one person. Where I am looking for someone whose struggle is the same as mine. So we can have that kind of empathy and you understand and I understand, and we're not really judging each other. Because a lot of people feel comfortable talking to people who are struggling with the same thing, because them say, boy, you can't judge me, that's why we are doing it. But sometimes neither of you have the, have the answer. Sometimes you need to find a person who has either overcome it, so they know what to do to get out of it, or the person who isn't really struggling with it, so they can give you ideas as to why, what I am doing. And maybe this is why this isn't a, a temptation for me, maybe this is why this isn't an issue. There are a lot of things that, um, I think in partnership that we need to encourage. One of the things that clearly needs to be encouraged is honesty. If, if I am looking to you to help me and I am not willing to share with you the ways I am struggling, and the times that I am struggling, so that you can actually offer some assistance, then it, it's going to be a waste of time. It doesn't make sense that I say to you, for example, Engel, that I'm struggling with pornography. And I struggled, I gave in last night. And we have a conversation and you say, how are you doing? And you say, boy, you know, say me not the two bad Engel, the temptation is there, but me, me I fight. I've, I've already lost one battle there. So the, the honest communication is a requirement. I have to be willing to tell you when I am struggling, when I have fallen, so that I can get the immediate kind of assistance that I need. The second thing is, there has to be a willingness to take, take the correction. Sometimes we get so sensitive when the individual is telling us the things that we need to hear, that we don't, we don't follow through with it. And yes, it's, it's not, it is a sensitive matter, so it's not going to be easy, when you're struggling with something and the person is telling you the things that you know that you should be doing. And sometimes the, the reflex response is just a boy, you know, you know, you know, holier than me. So man, I know where you go that, the humility has to be there. So the honesty, the willingness to, to, to tell what you are struggling with, even if it's not to the nitty gritty of it. But at least to let the person know that, boy, right now, I am, I am down, this is, I need, I need a boost up, I need, I needed to be more present, I need you to be checking up on me regularly. I need you to be encouraging me to, to do the things that I should be doing to maintain. If it's a boy, the laptop, and it's the nighttime, encourage me in the evening, hey, remember, put on the laptop, whatever, whatever, but those kind of things. If the honesty is there, if the humility is there to, to accept the correction, then those two things I think are very powerful. Another thing that I think that we, we shy from, and I think the ladies do it with, with more consistently than the men, is praying together and sharing, sharing these things, even if it's not in a massive group, having a smaller group where we can talk about the things that we're struggling with, or can bounce ideas off, off one another as to, um, did things go well this week? What, what did you do that led to these positive results? Did things go poorly? What did you do that led to these poor results? And then you can say, okay, what do I need to change? Boy, you don't necessarily have to be a daily thing, can be a weekly thing, what can I do in this week now to, to get these, these, these things, um, these changes. But in, in all honesty, and I can speak for myself, the main thing is, is having that, is establishing the right attitude. The attitude to be open, the attitude to be humble, where I, I am putting aside my pride, because I need, I need to get this assistance. And I think that's where we need, need to start. The need, a lot of the times we feel so comfortable in our Christian walk, because we have been saved by grace, that we forget how toxic sin is. That we forget what it does to us and what it does to God when he, he has to look at us with them, how it affects our relationship with him. What Jesus had to do to get rid of it. A lot of the times we get those things become so, so, um, we get so acquainted with that, they become so complacent. We become so complacent that we, we don't really see that we need to, to minimize, how, how frequently we, we sin. It's almost like a boy, if I sin then, you know, forgiveness, woo. If I sin then repentant, woo. And, and, and that's, that's the mentality, it's, it's not, as David had said, I'm sorry to keep quoting David, but it was a very powerful method for me. It's not the Joseph mentality. The, how could I, how could I do such a thing in the sight of God? If, if, if we inculcate, if we, if we try to, to have that mentality within us, then the openness and the honesty will be easier because the thing that we are doing is now repulsive to us. And it, I can tell you personally, a lot of the sins I struggle with, and I haven't taken the steps to get the corrective measure, because I like them. It's because I like the way they make me feel, I like the relief that they bring. And that's, that's, that's toxic. I need to get to the stage where those things being a part of my life, where those actions being a regular thing repulse me. Where I look at them, I'm like, oh my God, this is disgusting. Where I look at them and I'm like, oh my gosh, this is going to kill me. It's, it's where, where I will go through chemotherapy, which is painful. And I have to do so many things and it, it is bothersome, all the medication coming into the doctor, over and over again, I have to keep doing it, but I do it because I don't want to die. We, we don't treat sin like that, or I, let me speak my myself, I don't treat sin like that, because I don't, I haven't viewed sin like that for a long time. Because I haven't been struck down, because I haven't seen a chart where sin is eroding my body. And I have a few more days or weeks left to live. Because I feel like whenever I ask for forgiveness, even though I know that I have intent to return to the sin. even though I know that I have intent to return to the sin, right now I'm clean. And that's, that's the mentality that I have. I have to change how I view my relationship with God, how I view what sin is doing to my relationship with God, before I will get to the place where will, I will actually do something about it. And that is one of the things that we are trying to achieve in this Bible class. I can't promise you that I will have all of the answers or any of the answers. But if we can get to a stage where we recognize that we need to find the answer, that I need to get to a stage where my life is pleasing to God, then this Bible class has achieved its purpose. I see a whole lot of messages in the chat. Forgive me there, I may have gone down a tangent, but it's, it's, I am convicted that I can't, I can't live my Christian life half-heartedly anymore. It can't, especially as a Bible class teacher. I can imagine God looking down and saying, boy, realistically, you telling people that? I don't want to be in that state. And I am sure even if we don't feel that way deep down, we do. And I, I want you to help me to get to the place where I, I am spiritually on fire, and I want to help us to get to that place as well. Want to read some of the messages in the chat, I hope I haven't gone too far for them to still be relevant. Um, so Kirk says, Brother Smith had shared some time ago about the importance of the first few seconds of temptation. If you can manage to distract ourselves in those first few seconds, we can be successful more often. Hope I did justice to the idea, Brothers Smith, and Brothers Smith says, yes, fleeing is, is one distraction. Um, Engel said, smaller group is good. One-on-one person feel more comfortable having that person check, checking in. Can be a different person for a different problem assisting and talking, it's a good point, Engel. So even if you do have someone who you speak to or someone who is, you, you're working with to keep you on the right path, it doesn't have to just be that person, maybe you can find someone who can help you in another situation. Um, Brother Smith said, the devil will not tempt us with cattle oil. Exactly, it's always going to be something that is pleasant. But we have to develop relation, or Engel continues, but we have to develop relationships with people. It is weird if I didn't have a relationship with someone to just tell them, listen, I'm struggling with this. That's why I believe different fellowship activities is good to open that ground of finding that one and one person. Excellent point as well, Engel. Um, however, and this is one of the things that I want to, to ensure, don't, that we don't use that as a crutch. Sometimes we say that we don't have the kind of relationship that we should have with people to just open up like that, but we don't try to build a relationship. But if you genuinely believe that, you know, that these things, it's not going to bring about the kind of, um, positive change unless I have that kind of relationship. The next step should be, what do I do to forge this relationship? It shouldn't be a fit down until the relationship fall in my lap. Or will I do all that relationship, you know, so I can't talk to anybody? No, we can't leave it there. And to be honest, sometimes that's how the relationship can be formed. I know it's not the best way to do it, and I wouldn't say it's ideal either, but sometimes, sometimes that may be the very thing. But if you can't, if you genuinely have exhausted the other options, and you're like, boy, I'm struggling with this and I don't know who to talk to about it, and I don't feel necessarily that this is, then go to somebody in a leadership position and say, hey, I, I need some assistance with this, can you suggest somebody I can talk to? Or can you, can you be the person that speaks to me about it? And you never know, that may be the very, the very basis for, for the kind of relationship where you can open up. My point is, we'll have to be careful that we don't fall into the waiting on the, on the right time. A lot of the times we get pricked, we get inspired, we get motivated, we get zealous. When we hear messages or we experience something and we're like, yo, I need to do something. And then we wait on the win, we wait on that perfect opportunity to, to actually act on the feeling. And very rarely does that perfect opportunity come. And then the zeal goes, the inspiration goes, the desire to do the right thing goes, and we fall right back into the trap. We have to be careful that that doesn't happen. Um, I see a hand raised from Church Building One, I think that's Brother Grenell. Go ahead.
Yes, Stephen, um, I did the point, I think, uh, that you may just know about. Sometimes we don't necessarily need to know the person. That's well, it would be ideal if we have a wonderful relationship with the person that we're gonna go to. But if we recognize the danger and the hurt and devastation of sin, then probably we'll take a different approach when we really, really need help. I can tell you, if I go somewhere now and, um, to the doctor, to a general practitioner, and I found out that I have cancer, and, um, a specialist is recom, is recommended. I don't say I don't have a relationship with that specialist. I've never been to him, I'm not gonna say I'm not going to him, because I recognize my need. And therefore, even though it's probably the first time I'm going to this doctor, but this doctor has what can help me to deal with my problem. And if we see sin and things that are really setting us up and devastating our lives, I think we need to get to a place where, yes, we try to forge the relationships, but we sometimes have to be proactive and go to people and seek the help we need. You know, um, it's easier said than done, but I think it's something that we need to really, really, all of us who have those needs in our life for strengthening and for dealing with besetting sins or dealing with something that is keeping us back from being on fire for the Lord. We need to try and get the help we need rather than, you know, using the, the, the overused point that I really don't have a close relationship with anybody in the church and such the like. We probably, if we don't, we need to start to form those relationships. It's, it's like somebody says, you know, if all the sides of your life look dull, then go about shining one side, at least get it brilliant for yourself. So my suggestion is that we all try, make it a commitment, we're gonna seek the help we need so that at least going forward, our lives will be closer to God in terms of our relationship.
Excellent point, Brother Green, excellent point. Um. Let me just establish now that I'm not saying that public declarations, or you have to go and say, church, this is the case, et cetera, et cetera. Or if you have someone currently that you're speaking to and they're, they're helping in, then that's wonderful, keep it up. I just want to encourage all of us, and this is from my personal experiences and some of my own personal struggles, don't fool yourself into believing that you will get it done on your own. And the devil knows how to draw it out, to make it appear that you're getting it done, to give you a long enough period of achievement before you fall back, to tell yourself that, boy, you know, next time I'm going to get it. And he may make you feel that way again and again and again, and you keep believing that, you know, I can do this on my own. The Bible tells us, we need, we need each other. That's the reason that we, we are placed in the body of Christ. That is the reason why there's so many scriptures that tell us to stir each other up to good works. There's so many scriptures that tell us to encourage one another. There's so many scriptures that tell us that if you are in a place, spiritually speaking, then you should go to others when they're struggling. Sometimes it is to encourage, sometimes it is to reproach, but we need, we need it. God not wait, tell us it by accident, these things aren't written without knowledge that these things take place. And as this passage said, these things are common. Let us take comfort in the knowledge that the things that we will share, the struggles that we are going through, we aren't the only ones. And if that is the only thing that can get us to say, boy, I'm gonna make the talk about this, or at least start the conversation, then I think that that is a good place to start from. I can't tell you that I have all the answers, but what I can tell you is I have made a whole heap of mistakes and I'm struggling with a whole heap of things. If anybody in here needs somebody to talk to, and they want to find somebody that, that hired, that is very likely is struggling with what they're struggling with, you can take a gamble on me. I am, I am willing to talk to you, I am willing to, to see if we can, we can work this out together. And that's not an empty gesture. As I said, I can't promise you that I have the solutions that you need. But I am committed to trying to help us to find them. And I hope that this Bible class will play a small part. Um, we are almost finished. So I guess the delaying of this class shall in my own hands. Password. Wow, the hands raised, I, I really need to start throwing the password in the middle of the class or at the beginning. Go ahead, brother, brother Jason.
The password is, good measure, press down, shaking together and running over.
Excellent, that does sound like, brother, that sounds like one of the young account.
A young account.
All right, so, um, excellent, excellent, is that, was that, are you sure?
No, it's Zion.
I knew that, don't, don't, don't trouble me. Um, since the Paul, I can put down your hand and read you. All right, so the password, the password for next class is find yourself an accountability partner. Find yourself an accountability partner. But just in case you forget, to find yourself an accountability partner, hopefully you're trying to remember that password, it will stand as a reminder. Um, thank you for tolerating my ranting this evening. Hopefully on Sunday we will get through more material. Um, I want to thank everybody, this class is, is a big encouragement to me. And I hope that it will be the same for you. If you have any prayer requests, now is the time to, to send them in the chat as I hand over to the person doing closing prayer.
We pray, oh God, for the work, oh God, of the church, that Father, in light of this pandemic, we will not lose focus of where we are here. We are still in charge, we are still in control. And with this, oh God, our faith, oh God, is still confident, oh God, and we still have a faith that's continuing and a faith that is conquering. We ask, oh Lord, as we put your manservant, Brother Grenell, into your hands, that Father, you blessed him at this time, oh God. You strengthen him, give him your God, um, the physical health as well as the spiritual health, oh God, as needed, oh Father, for him, dear God, to, um, be an example to those, oh Father, in which, oh God, he ministered. And those, oh God, in which he leaded his household. We ask, oh Lord, that you continue to support him as he, Father, dear God, praise about the various challenges that he have at his work. We pray, dear God, that, um, you will give him wisdom that he be able, oh Father, to endure and to, Father, dear God, find the right solutions, oh Lord, to, um, to bear this and to relieve himself, oh God, at the, um, the shortest time. We ask, oh Lord, that also, as he asks for a constant revival, that Father, he will, Father, dear God, find the joy, the, the, the spark that is needed, oh Father, that he will rejuvenate, oh Father, um, and be excited, oh Father, continuously about you and your will. We pray similarly for this, similar prayer for ourselves, that Father, we too, oh God, will be rejuvenated and be excited, oh Lord, um, as in the first day, oh Father, in which we gave our lives to you. We pray, dear God, for the work of the church, we realize we have the benevolence programs, we, Father, pray for the various gospel meetings that we have, that our outreach efforts, oh God, will help those who are suffering both physically and spiritually. Continue, dear God, to pray for the work of the church, and we continue, dear God, to pray for each and every one of us, that Father, we, dear God, we realize that we have each other um, to hold each other accountable and to help each other. We continue, dear God, to put these things into you, to you, oh Father, as we continue to pray. Through Christ Jesus' name we ask these things, amen.
Thanks again, everyone, for the time taken to come and to lead in tonight's discussion. We thank Brother Stephen again for the preparation and the well-thought-out lesson and the, the nuggets that were shared this evening. Truly, I hope that we can apply them to our lives. Please remember, December thirteenth to fifteenth, um, Sunday to Tuesday will be our, um, gospel meeting. Brother Thomas from the, um, New York Roosevelt Congregation will be our guest speaker. And so let us please, um, prepare and advertise to help others to be a part of the discussion. The topics will be why Jesus, why Christianity, and why baptism? And so we can share these topics with others to, that, that, that may spark interest um, so that they come and listen and gain knowledge. Also, we have, please remember the collection drive that we're having for closing and other items. It goes on Monday, Wednesdays and Saturdays between nine and twelve P M. That's Mondays, Wednesdays and Saturdays up until December the twelfth. Nine A M to twelve P M drop-offs can be done at the building. If persons need to make any special arrangements outside of this period, kindly contact the number by WhatsApp or phone that you see on the screen. Our Navigating Life set series continues on Sunday, sorry, Saturday, December the fifth at six thirty P M. Um, when we finalize the topic, it will be shared, but please remember it is December the fifth, not this Saturday, but week after next Saturday, we will have our Navigating Life session. We will have our watch night service, um, it will be on the last day of the year, I believe it is a Thursday. Um, so we will be all online, see the different guidelines the government has put out. And, um, the year is coming to a close and we, in, in light of, in every moment, there's still reason to give thanks. And so, um, watch that as we give God thanks and we look forward to, uh, new year. We continue to pray that this, this year, twenty twenty-one, will be a better year. We hope it will be, and we pray for, um, the work of the church as we have our kickoff gospel meeting to start the year, um, in January. And so we also mark that in our calendars, um, I believe it's January the tenth.
Yesterday is Brother Engel.
Ten to the thirteen, the speakers are the brother Michael Roberts, brother Dave Osborn, and the brother Sheldon Shirley. And so we are having a lot of activities to keep us engaged. Um, and so we pray that we will benefit from all these activities that we will, we'll find the rejuvenating spirit and revival that is needed, um, to keep us, um, keep us focused and not be distracted by, um, the disappointments that we find in life and the trials as well. And so again, thank you for being here tonight, and we look forward as we meet once more on, um, Sunday at nine A M. So today, today's Christmas, sister Krista's birthday, is she online, by the way? Don't think she's online, so today, if you haven't contacted Sister Krista yet, you can reach out to her. So today, if you haven't contacted Sister Krista yet, you can reach out to her, um, to wish her a happy birthday. And this Saturday, the walkers celebrate their, um, anniversary. Okay, um, so we will wish them a happy anniversary on Saturday. Those are our announcements. God bless and have a wonderful evening. Take care.